Welcome our Mayor, Captain Nigel Yates. Our Deputy Mayor, Captain Adrian Lawton. Our Chief Officer, Mrs Sarah Hayden. If I can call on Reverend Darren Fraser to say a prayer, start our meeting off please this evening. Thank you.
I've sort of had the privilege of being invited into Nyperstley First School today for an assembly. And I found sort of this sort of theme about kindness this morning and there's a lovely piece of scripture which I shared with them which says this therefore, as God's chosen people, holy and dearly loved, clothe yourselves with compassion, kindness, humility, gentleness and patience. And of course, I was exploring this idea of kindness with the children today and they were absolutely amazing because when they began to speak about kindness, not only did they say kindness should be with words, but it also should be with actions. So actions and words and what an amazing future we have when we've got such amazing children going to our local schools. I was in Sheffield on Sunday afternoon and went to see my daughter. It was a birthday weekend and again, the connection with the students that I got to spend time with and have something to eat with. They were from, they were sort of aerospace engineer, you name it, they all sorts of things they were studying. Really intelligent people. And of course, I asked a question about, well, if I'm thinking of getting a used car, what car would you recommend? And what engine would you recommend? Of course, I had this dialogue for about 40 minutes and I was just still eating my food. But what sort of really struck me by it was they had different opinions. And at times their opinions were very different and quite strong, but they treated one another with such kindness, with such respect. And there was actually genuine dialogue. I have to say, at the end of 40 minutes, I didn't still know what used car to sort of get. But I was really struck by this idea of their their kindness and their genuine sort of treatment and love for each other as I shared their different opinions. How do these connect? Well, from the youngest of children to our university students across the country. I think they're a great example to us actually about how when we come together, we may have very strong opinions and actually different opinions, but we're called to treat each other with kindness. And so just before I pray, I want to read this piece of scripture again, which says therefore, as God's chosen people, holy and dearly loved, clothe yourselves with compassion, kindness, humility, gentleness and patience. And on that note, let me just open just with a moment of prayer. So Lord, we thank you for our schools, for our universities. And we thank you for this town and this place in which we live. And we thank you for this town council. We thank you for those who have offered themselves a service to our communities. And tonight, Lord, as discussions take place, we pray that people will treat one another with kindness. And even though, Lord, there may be times when there might be much disagreement, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to meet together in peace and for the opportunity to have dialogue. Lord, I place this meeting before you tonight and ask for your continued blessing upon them and upon the town and place in which we live, in Jesus' name.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this sitting of Biddle Town Council. Before we start, we'll have the normal preamble. This meeting has been recorded and will be uploaded to the Biddle Town Council YouTube page. The aim is that decision making should be transparent and in the public domain, which will involve more of our community and local democracy. By being in this council chamber, you are consenting to be recorded and for your image to be added to YouTube. The images and sound may be used for training purposes. Any views expressed are the speaker's own and do not necessarily reflect the view of Biddle Town Council. Please view the guidance on recording and public meetings policy if you need more information. Thank you very much. Moving on to today's agenda, item 67, public participation. We have the Staff of Police down. I haven't seen a Staff of Police officer.
I assume they've been called elsewhere.
Otherwise, it'd be pain. Right, okay. So we'll rapidly move on. If they do make a late entrance, we'll create space for them. So moving on, item 68, apologies. Do we have any apologies?
We do. Councillors Hart, Jones, Harper, Salt and Smith.
Okay, thank you. And declarations of interest. First one to declare any disclosable pecuniary interests and dispensations. councillor Rogers has his hand up.
Mr Mayor, it's just my child expenses and stuff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And to declare any other disclosable interests. Okay, so we'll move on to the minutes of the town council meeting held on Tuesday the 14th of January 2025. Do I have a proposer for those minutes? Councillor Hawley. And do I have a second? Councillor Garvey. If we just go through those minutes for accuracy, if you don't mind. So present, in attendance, public participation, apologies, declarations of interest, previous minutes reviewed, mayor's communications, standing agenda items, to receive an update on outside body meetings held since the November meeting, to receive a verbal update on the town hall frontage development and the accounts and finance. And that concluded the minutes. So if we're all happy with that, can I have a show of hands to accept those? We'll take that as unanimous. Thank you very much. Just bear with me while I sign those. You very much. So next set of minutes to go through is the minutes of the Recreation and Immunities Committee. So moved by councillor Parks. Can I have a second please? Councillor Wood, thank you. So again, going through those minutes, which the meeting was held on Tuesday the 14th of January. Present, in attendance, apologies and approval of substitute members, declarations of interest, minutes of previous meetings, to receive feedback following the consultation on proposed allotment policy changes and approve the final documents. To receive a presentation on footpath work at the burial grounds and proposals for remedial action. To agree a date for the allotments annual meeting. And now agenda items and jobs for the Leinsterman. Councillor Proudlove, do you have a comment to make?
Yeah, just to start that. So I said councillor Yates urged councillors to report any potfalls to Staffordshire Mollins District Council. I'm pretty sure that would have been.
County Council, yes. Well spotted. Put in there as a test. So and there were one confidential, there was one confidential item. So if we're happy with that, with that amendment from Staffordshire Mollins District Council to Staffordshire County Council, would I please have a show of hands to accept those minutes? Okay, thank you. We'll take that as unanimous. The next one to look at is the minutes of the Planning Committee held on Tuesday the 21st of January.
Those minutes, Mr Chair?
Councillor Garvey moves those. Could I have a second please? Councillor Hawley. Again, going through those for accuracy, present, in attendance, apologies, declarations of interest, minutes of the previous meeting, standard agenda items to consider any proposed sites for local listings, new planning applications, to consider supplementary applications to the Planning Committee, new decisions and notices received from the district and any appeals which include the minutes. So if we're happy with those, can I have a show of hands to receive those? Ball in favour? Thank you very much. So moving on, minutes of the Town and Community Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 22nd of January.
Absence of the chair, can I move those please?
Certainly can. Councillor Garvey's moved those. Can I have a second please? Somebody who was present. Councillor Rogers, thank you. Next time councillor Jackson, next time. And going through the minutes, present, in attendance, apologies and approval of substitute members, declarations of interest, minutes of the previous meeting, to receive a draft of the Biddle Town Council caring for your environment plan and to provide feedback. Item requested by councillor Salt to consider becoming a cooperative council and to receive a verbal update on events. So if we consider those as a true record, can I have a show of hands to accept those minutes please? Thank you. We can take that as unanimous. The next one is minutes of the Finance Strategy and Management Committee held on Tuesday the 28th. Ah, councillor Rogers.
It's Mr Mayor. Could I ask you to move those minutes and also take a vote on the reset please?
Well, that's on the agenda later on.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
So if we can go through those minutes, present, in attendance, apologies and approval of substitute members, declarations of interest, to consider whether the town council will invest in side essentials following the presentation from Prism, previous minutes attached, to confirm updating letting conditions and booking forms for 2025, audit and account matters, to receive an update on the proposed town and parish charter with Staffordshire Mollins District Council, a review of policies, which was the training and development policy, the complaints policy, the data protection G D P R and retention policy, a dress and appearance policy and the co-option policy. Standing order, standing agenda items to consider disposal of any assets and to confirm any new approved suppliers. And there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven confidential items. Now, I had a proposer. Can I have a second please? Councillor Proudlove? No, I'm not. Can I have a show of hands to accept those minutes as a true record?
Can I just make?
Councillor Jackson.
I just make a very quick comment in the confidential item 100 on the second page, about a third of the way up, it said councillor Jackson wanted the workload to fit the hours. But this is the bit, what would allow this for this year? It's not in my gift to allow anything for this year. It was a decision of the council. That was a personal that I was happy to go forward this year, but it isn't down to me to make that decision. How that reads, it sounds as though I made that decision, which is not right.
You say you would support it this year? Would you be happy if we changed it?
I would, yeah. Support would be better.
Okay, lovely. On that basis of that amendment, can we have a show of hands to accept the minutes on that amendment? Excellent. I'll just carry it down a little bit please. Bear with me for a second. All right, moving on to the agenda, item 71, mayor's communications. My interesting bit, to be perfectly honest. Just a review of the previous month, for those who came. Chinese New Year celebrations, which were held at the front of the town hall, were absolutely superb. I think we were truly blessed by some gorgeous weather, which helped. It was a window of blue skies and sunshine between a very wet Friday and an equally wet Sunday. So we did very well there. But I think it was an event which was very well received by the community and I think our Chinese community, certainly led by the Reverend Yan Yan, did themselves proud and certainly did Biddle proud. So we're very, very pleased to see that. And a couple of other things which we did that month was the Youth Speaks event hosted by the Rotary Club downstairs, which was a public speaking competition on a topic of their choice by, I would say, middle schools, although some schools from Cheshire don't have a middle school system, but it's that age group, and senior schools. And it was a very, very entertaining night. As Mayor, my job was to pick a question for the man to answer off the cuff, which is a lot more difficult than it sounds because all your prepared thoughts and questions, most of them, if not all of them, were covered in the speech which they said, which meant you had to think of a very clever question and be a little bit fleet of mind and fleet of thought, which doesn't always work as the evening goes on, but I think we got away with it quite well. What I think alls can say is the younger generation, we're in good hands. So we'll be fine. I applaud them for the efforts which they put in. It was a pleasure to open Becky's cakes, by the way. If anybody hasn't sampled Becky's cakes, I know she does some catering for herself in the town hall, and she does a very good job. But she's actually opened a shop and a cafe up on the St John's Road semicircle, the arch curve, St John's Road curve. And it's well worth a visit. And I wish Becky and her enterprise all the best for success. And then finally, there was the Festival of Brilliant launch, which was held at Biddleford Hall, which was an invited event. It was a pleasure for Biddle to host that and it was a pleasure to be there. Fantastic event, really well received, tour of the gardens. And I think Biddleford Hall is very much getting themselves on the tourist map for the north of Staffordshire, if not a lot further afield, to be perfectly honest. And then hosted by councillor Rogers, we had the allotment AGM, which was very, very well attended. Every seat was taken, seats at the back taken. And I think it was a very, overall, it was a very, very positive meeting. Yeah, so I was very pleased to come to that. Forward Communications, just to keep you informed what's going on. Week on Saturday, we've got the Robbie Williams Tribute Act, as seen on TV, extremely good. Recommend that if I take any proceeds which we make over that go towards the mayor's charity. So hopefully it's a very good and very well attended night. Ticket sales are going pretty well. We have got a few tickets left. So if anybody's thinking of coming, then really it's probably best to book beforehand. We've also got coming up on the 22nd of March, a month later, our second instalment of Biddle Scott Soul, which sold out very quickly last time and ticket sales are going very well. So again, that's another good night to look forward to. And finally, what I'm very pleased to present is today we launched, we did the press launch for my mayor's charity challenge, which is the Pathways to the Future, a cyclo ride, which I'm doing with some able volunteers who will probably push me over the finishing line from Biddles to London using purely cycle tracks and canal tow paths just to prove the sustainability of cycling for getting around. So that's going to be between the 9th and 12th of April. There'll be a small launch event where we start at live stream church, they then wave goodbye to me. And then we are having a little bit more of a flamboyant event when I've gone, I think, to celebrate the fact I've disappeared over the horizon, to be honest. But that will be on the Saturday, which is when hopefully I'll be crossing the finish line in Regent's Park. And if it all goes to plan, and I'm in a fit state to do it, we'll look to livestream the finish, so to speak. So yeah, if you can keep that in your diary. Again, it really promotes sustainable transport. And we are running on the Saturday a rescue me cycle repair and distribution workshop. So we've got an awful lot of bicycles which have been collected by Staffordshire County Council. And we're going to have a day where people can come and collect those and tape them. It's bigger than that, isn't it? Would you like to say something?
Too much because I'm gonna, we'll talk about it a bit more at town and can you?
Okay, yeah. What's this space?
A year of cycle action.
Yes, I've been sent on my way and then they're doing really flamboyant things in my absence. So, you know, these things happen. So that's all I've got to say, I think, on mayor's communication. But yeah, so exciting month coming up. So moving on to the more mundane parts of the agenda, standing agenda items. To receive an update on the management of town council assets.
Thank you. The only things to say on this by way of updates are the lease discussions are ongoing as regards the visitor centre. And you'll be aware that we were advised that we should complete searches such as if we were buying the visitor centre. So those are ongoing now as well. And I believe the bus hub roof has been fixed. There's been a lot of scaffolding up there and the scaffolding is now gone. So I'm hoping that that's a good sign.
You must, yeah. The meeting last week at the district council regarding car parking, there seems as if there's a movement now for town and parish councils to take over or potentially as a community asset to ascertain the cars, some of the car parks within the district of Staffordshire Mollins District Council. We've got a car park predominantly at the moment, which is up at the old Calais Hill and Walker Football Ground, as I call it. Now, that is down as, because there's no charging for that car park at the moment and they're going through a consultation period whether we should start charging for other car parks. But there is an opportunity if the town council does wish to look at car parks within our area, which currently don't come under the paint scheme, which could be taken back if the town council so much. So it's just something that's on the table, you need to be aware of that. If we think that could be a community asset and the town council wants to take it on, then the district council is certainly worth listening to us.
And just following up on that, if I may, one of the other obvious items on the agenda was that, is the car park at Biddle Green. And again, because, you know, these are an asset which obviously costs money and there's always pressure from the accountants to maximise revenue on these things. But there is a will to hand them over. So if there's a, if there's a an instance where if Biddle Town Council looking after the visitor centre, then the car park could be part of that package, so to speak. Councillor Proudlove?
Thank you, Chair. I just wondered if it'd be worth a discussion on the agenda reckoning basis. We've got a standing agenda item regarding land opportunities and all of this, it's within that criteria. It's a mechanism style.
Absolutely. Yes. Councillor Rogers?
Yeah, Mr Mayor, it's on a similar lines about putting it on another agenda, not the discussion this evening. Because obviously if you put pay display on the front of your park, you're just huge, range road and range fields. Because that's human nature, which we want to avoid. Thank you.
Representations along those lines have been made quite firmly.
It's not a discussion, but.
Yes. So we'll move that item to Recreation and Immunities. Secondly, to receive an update on health and safety activities, which include risk management. Again, Chief Officer.
Thank you. So you've got some risk management information on the agenda this evening. It's that time of year when we review our policy and our wider risk assessment. And just really by way of an update, the ongoing repairs, maintenance schedule that we've got for the town hall and other assets. There's no glitches with that, nothing to advise you is an issue that's going to require significant investment or is a concern. So it just.
Lovely. No comments. And to receive an update on the Biddleworks Together project.
Thank you. So the next meeting for that is the 26th of February. We set two meetings, so it's 26th of February and then 26th of I've got some really lovely feedback, both anecdotally in terms of the numbers of people using the services. So I've sent out a quick reminder to everybody today just to make sure they get their numbers into us because it's really helpful to know just how many people that we've supported through those activities. So we'll have a bit more data to show as we get towards year and done that.
Okay, thank you very much. No comments on that. Item number 73, to receive an update on outside body meetings attended since the January meeting. Have there been any? Councillor Garvey?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've attended two meetings in the last month. The Biddle Festival meeting at the end of January, which was very well attended on this occasion. I haven't seen it. It's a very fruitful debate in terms of options and ways of moving it forward. A number of these will be communicated to the Chief Officer anyway, from the Chair of that group. But there were, I'd say, a lot of very good discussions in terms of establishing a separate Autumn Arts Festival alongside, run sort of as a parallel, a later event to the Community Festival in the summer, which I think is a potentially very good idea. And the themes for the festival have been put out on social media as a poll as to what people would like. The information's out there in the public domain. I also had the opportunity at the beginning of this month to attend the Fairtrade, Biddle Fairtrade Community Group meeting, confirming that the Fairtrade fortnight now has been permanently moved to the September, 22nd of September to the 5th of October slot. In the meantime, the sessions with the Fairtrade group in the schools will be going ahead and the schools competition will be launched with this time intending it to design a promotional poster for a fair trade cake baking event that will take place in conjunction with the town council's homegrown and handmade event in in the autumn, which actually happens to coincide with a fair trade fortnight.
And councillor Rogers?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah. I've entered the SPCA. It was election of officers, which is the same as last year. But there's something that may be of interest to people. There's a rural themed seminar at Gaeton Village Hall, which is Great Aywood area, not too far away, it sounds, but it isn't. And it's all about rural housing plans and health and wellbeing and neighbourhood plans. There's four speakers, Adam Barton in urban version, which we know well, Orkies of Support Staffordshire, Andy Wheeler from the SPCA and Michelle Cliff from Support Staffordshire. Now, it's on Wednesday the 5th of March, 9:30 till 12:30. And they would like an RSVP by the 3rd of March for people who are attending, which is free to go to, but they'd just like to know how many people are going there. You're interested speakers there on some important issues, I think, for this town. So it'd be nice if you had a representation. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
For those who want to go and interest in sustainable transport, you can get there without using a road on your push bike.
Is there a hospital in between?
There is actually, yes. There is a hospital halfway, yes. So you'll be absolutely fine. Okay, so no further speakers on that. Next item 74, to receive an update on the town hall frontage development. Again, over to you, Chief Officer.
Thank you. I've no reason to suggest that we are anything other than 24th of February as a start date on site. I know there are some ongoing discussions at the moment about the availability of bricks. Kept out of that for now, so let them decide.
The inscripted bricks.
No, that's not the bricks. Yes. So it might be that we need to pull together one of our town hall working groups to have a conversation about that if we're required to. But obviously, that's what we're paying our contractors to sort out and to resolve themselves. So as I say, there's no reason to suggest the dates as yet. They were just in the process of sorting out safety and exchanging contracts and all that kind of thing at the moment.
Okay, lovely. Thank you. Yes, Jackson.
We have got a scheduled meeting on the 25th of March, I think.
We have got a scheduled meeting on the 25th of March, I think, as well.
Yeah. Sorry, Chair. I wonder whether we, we might want to meet separately, if there are any decisions for us to take, or if we need to read anything or collectively agree. It's just a heads up.
Then on the 25th, was with the contract, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Item seventy-five, to confirm the outcome of the advertisement for a town councillor in the West Ward and to agree the next steps.
Thank you. Yeah. So we've advertised for a vacancy, um, after the last meeting of town council and that closed last week. Um, and, um, the election team have advised today that nobody requested an election for that position, which means that we are now in a position where we can co-opt. Obviously, we reviewed the co-option policy through the Finance Strategy Management Committee, so that's absolutely up to date. So at the point at which you're ready to do that, you can move forward with co-option for the West Ward.
Have we done any work to promote the co-option now? Does that start now effectively?
It starts whenever you want it to start. You might want to consider that in conjunction with the next item.
Yeah.
Um, but you can, um, essentially advertise the, you advertise the position. Then it's up for us to actually find somebody who would want to do that.
Yeah.
Go through that process.
Okay. Item seventy-six, which is related to confirm that a vacancy has arisen in the East Ward. To agree that Staffordmore's District Council should be contacted in order to advertise this position. So this is, uh, Chief Officer.
Councillor Rushton.
Councillor Rushton.
It's no longer able to join us at town council meeting. She's not well enough to return, unfortunately. And we'd, um, obviously pass on our best wishes to her. That does create a vacancy in the East Ward. So in a similar way to what we've just been through with the West Ward, we would need to follow the process with Staffordmore's District Council Elections Team and advertise a vacancy to see if anybody would like to call in and mention the East Ward.
Councillor Jackson.
Yeah, thank you, Smear. Um, I did pop up to see Sylvia one day last week. Um, mine is as sharp as it ever was. It did seem to have lost a little bit of weight. But I did tell her what the, you know, the, what the issue was that she'd been, that she had this dispensation for six months. And I told her that, you know, she would no longer be, um, a town councillor after, after this, particularly after this meeting. Which, you know, she was upset about, but not, not overly. She knew it was coming, so she was okay with that. And at this juncture then, could we make sort of a decision this evening, Sarah? As far as we possibly can, that if the vacancy in the East Ward is not called in by the ten electors, that we roll the two together, uh, and go through the co-option procedure and do the co-option if that's what happens on the same evening. Sometime in possibly March, would it be, might be, mate?
I think from, for me, it would be tidier for you all if you could consider all vacancies for, for two, you know, all applicants for two posts in one sitting. Um, if you get more than one applicant, it's, it would be nice to be able to, uh, to make a decision one way or the other on that. On one evening, rather than it taking two or three meetings potentially and going into the spring. So if you wanted to delay, um, the co-option for the West Ward until we've got a position with regards to the East Ward, then you, you can do that at, at your discretion, really, whenever you're happy to do that.
Yeah. Councillor Garvey?
It's well, I think that was essentially what councillor Jackson was proposing and I second that.
I was just going to, yes, I was just going to accept that as a, as a proposal. Councillor Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we should send a letter of gratitude, probably a bunch of flowers to Councillor Rushton, if she's still Councillor Rushton at the moment in time. No fault of her own, unfortunately, so that she can't be with us. And yes, we should roll them on together. And it does need to be fairly soon because it needs to be finalized before May, case it has to go to the election. Which I'd hope it doesn't, but it could be answered on the county elections. But I hope it doesn't, to be quite honest. But that's down to the members of public, isn't it, there? That's the way it goes.
Thank you. Um, before we go to a vote, I would like to put it on the public record to, to thank councillor Rushton for her many years of service. Uh, diligently at this town council and before she was a town council in the voluntary sector, in the community groups, uh, especially around Biddlefeast in the town. So again, you know, I'd, I'd like to thank Sylvia for the effort which she's put in for the town of Biddle over many, many, many years. And I think councillor Jackson would probably like to reiterate.
Yeah, I think it would be nice. Um, I think, I think many, I don't know whether many people know this, but Sylvia actually pays for some flowers to go in front of the, for the town halls. She has done for, well, I think since, since she was the mayor, I think she's been doing that. And she wants, she said she wanted to carry on doing that for as long as she possibly, possibly could. Um, so I think, I believe Sarah's gonna see, go and see them one day next week. So that, I think second, somebody suggested a bunch of flowers or something for her. Um, I certainly second that and perhaps you could take them in with you when you go.
That's a lovely idea. That's okay.
Hmm. Okay. So we've had a proposal from councillor Jackson that we, uh, let the consideration on whether we go to an election, uh, go forward to Staffordmore's District Council. If that lapses with it and triggers a co-option, then we roll the two co-options together. That is very badly worded, but that is the gist. Uh, councillor Garvey has seconded that. In the absence of any other counter proposals or amendments, could I have a show of hands to say if that's accepted? And yes, that is accepted unanimously. So if you can tidy that up for the minutes. And, uh.
It's English.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Item seventy-seven, a, to agree a transfer of one hundred thousand pounds from the CCLA account into the Unity account.
That's what, yeah. What's the reason?
Well, as you know, with UK Shared Prosperity Fund, we have to pay things in advance. So in order, yeah, in order to, to pay for the bricks and what have you for the frontage, we need to have bought them in order to claim the money back. So it's for that.
For clarity, what does CCLA stand for? I don't know.
She's Chartered Local Authorities. That's our investment.
Yeah.
Thanks.
It's specifically for nonprofit making organisations, yes. Yes. Um, okay, can I have a proposal for that? We've got councillor Garvey, councillor Hawley, are you proposing seconding?
I was, yeah.
So councillor Hawley proposing, councillor Garvey seconding. If I can have a show of hands, please to accept that. Yes, that's accepted unanimously. Thank you very much. Item seventy-eight, to confirm that councillor Harper will become the Health and Safety Monitoring Councillor, following the resignation of the previous Monitoring Councillor. Councillor Rogers, are you going to propose that?
I propose that, yeah. Um, I can just say that councillor Harper has been in this role before, then he stepped down to deputy. He's the deputy, but can we go through this section first?
Yes. That's proposed by councillor Rogers. Can we have a second for that, please? Councillor Jackson, uh, in the absence of any other nominations, can I have a show of hands, please? Again, that's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. And could we go and look at the deputy at the finance committee?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Councillor Hawley?
Yeah.
Do you volunteer?
Given the, the fact that as a monitoring councillor, I basically did it on my own for quite a while. Now there's two of us and I'm sort of wondering whether it would be useful to actually have a deputy with councillor Harper. And so effectively, if, if the people consider that, so it's a later meeting, we could actually end up with two people doing the job rather than one.
Yes.
I think it, it works better when there's a, you know, there's two of you on and just one actually doing it. It's sort of something of a suggestion in that sense.
Like I made, councillor Harper is the deputy. But that actually has helped with that. So yes, absolutely. Very beneficial.
And we're going to defer the, uh, nomination and acceptance of a deputy to the finance committee.
Okay.
Could I have a proposer for that, please? Councillor Jackson, seconded. Councillor Hawley, show of hands to accept that. Unanimous. Thank you very much. Item seventy-nine, to agree, to agree in an insurance provider from the 28th of February, 2025, for the following 12 months, based on the attached assessment of risk and risk management policy. A bit of a complice. Now you, you will find in your pack a risk management policy. Chief Officer?
Uh, thank you. Yep. So you also have got, one of the A3 sheets that we've got is the overview of risk that we've got. That's lots of different colours. So red things as ever are the amendments to the, they've put low level risk on that for you. So these are the risks that, considering when you're, uh, having to look basically at whether we've got sufficient insurance coverage. Um, did you want to ask, so have you got any questions on that before we move?
Yes, yes. Any questions with regard to the risk document only at this stage? Councillor Wood, is you, are you on the risk?
Insurance providers.
Right, okay, okay. So there's no questions on the risk document. Uh, right. Regarding the insurance itself then, councillor Wood?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the resolution is to agree an insurance provider, I'm judged, from the 28th of February. Yeah. I mean, I certainly know from the district council, we, we get involved with other councils and we, when we go out for procurement on insurance.
Yeah.
We all get together and then we tend to charge the price down more so than just giving us a single entity to insure it. Are we, like, you know, the association of councils, whatever, that name is.
Parish council.
Wouldn't come to it. Do, do, are, do we explore that with other town and parish councils? Whether we could go in together on an insurance box?
Historically, it hasn't been an option for us. We tried when we took this building on to, to join with the district council and arrangements with insurance book. It's at kind of principal authority level, those discussions where I think there's something to be said going forward about that. But the only two providers really that I've been able to get quotations of specialised in town and parish council provision already. So I think we're probably getting the best deal as we can at the moment. But I, but I, I do think possibly could be this other year as a group of councils as to whether or not we can do some collective purchasing. But it might take a bit more. Um, so I think everybody, unless anyone's got any other questions on the risk management documents, if you're happy that they support insurance considerations and that's adequate for you, then I think as you came in, you've got two quotations. Has everyone got sight of those?
I did not pick them up. Councillor Rogers?
They're back to back, I think. They look like that. Well, obviously it's back to back.
Yeah, 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 got this.
No, yes, no.
Zorik and Gallagher, that one.
No, Zorik and Gallagher.
Ricky Gallagher, yeah.
Zorik and Gallagher. We've got a recommendation.
Actually, yeah.
We nearly, we nearly had a casual day, you can see, in Biddle South. Thank you. Spending a little bit of time next time. Yes.
Oh, we've scoured again.
You're in.
Country court.
Well, notice item forty on the risk assessment as councillors walking around the chamber. Okay, so you've got those documents in front of you. We have two quotations, one from Gallagher and one from Zorik. Uh, if we can have everybody's attention, I'll hand you over to the chief officer, who does have a recommendation. And then we'll go for the floor.
Thank you. So you'll, you'll see they're, they're very similar in price, which is always nice to, to see when you get quotations. It's not radically different. The Gallagher one, we, um, spoken at length to the representative who's provided this quote this time. Um, they're in a much more competitive position this time, which he's pleased about. They couldn't get anywhere near any of the quotations in previous years. And we've been with Zorik a very long time and had absolutely no issues with them. Part of the Gallagher quote, though, includes free online training for all of our staff in all of the health and safety issues that we do online training on already. So the two hundred pounds difference in the two quotes could easily save us some money in terms of our training requirements throughout the year. So every member of staff, and you've got eleven members of staff, just training on slips, trips and falls. Manual handlers. Oh, we do, we make them do asbestos training as well.
So, Chair, I suppose, I mean, how, how much does that training cost you?
Well, at the moment, we can get a package for something like five sessions, uh, five online things. I think it's forty pounds. So bear in mind, over the course of a year, they'll probably do twelve, twelve, fifteen sessions each. Two hundred pounds, really.
Understood.
Yeah. It's a saving for us there. So whilst it's, it would be a chat, and obviously it's for you, we've got that relationship with Zorik and we've never had any issues with them whatsoever. It might be worth considering in terms of a saving for training provision.
Okay. Councillor Grayden?
I propose to do with Gallagher.
Yeah, certainly. Second by councillor Jackson. Are there any other comments before we go to the vote?
Just.
Councillor Wood?
I'm just, now, now we're looking at Gallagher.
Councillor Wood?
Sorry, Mr. House, stand up. Well, in the small print at the bottom, it says, in order to ensure rate stability, Biddleford Town Council may choose to set up a three-year binding long-term agreement with the insurance company at an LTA premium of three thousand one hundred and twenty-one. So I'm just wondering whether you want to consider that, if that's on the table now. Because otherwise, if we take it out as a one-year policy, you, you, you won't, you won't get the stability and if inflation goes up and the increases go up. There's something I think we should consider before we take the vote.
Well, I, I did wonder about this, but I also thought if we take on additional assets, the visitor centre, for example, will then change the premium, will change the coverage. You know, if we, if we do have other conversations about additional assets, we've, we're going forward. We need to have a conversation about the War Memorial, for example, because nobody currently is claiming that, the ownership of that. So therefore, nobody is insuring that. So that's a conversation which might then add to our liabilities, if that's the way you want to go with that. So I wonder whether actually next year's provision won't be the same as, as what we've got now. I don't know. That's where I was at with that in my thinking, anyway.
Hmm. To see how they can, they can't possibly be responsible for it in a way. It's within their privilege of the footpath, isn't it?
You know, they say they're in the footpath, but nothing above the footpath.
So they don't own railings?
Some furniture, but it's not classed as furniture.
Hmm. Right, okay.
Anyway, that's a conversation for another time, but it, but it, you know, our policies will well change as a result of all the discussions throughout the next one.
Hmm. Right. Councillor Hawley?
I used to chant, yeah. Basically, this AG community schemes, I presume that they actually insure other town councils as well? They do. So is the cover that we're getting, are going to be at least identical to what we've got now with our current insurer?
I believe so. Yep. So when, so when I've asked them for a quotation without the figures that we've got from Zorik, I've sent them the current cover that we are expecting. And I believe that's, that's identical.
The, the reason I asked that is that obviously if we've got sort of events which are out of Biddles, which we've, in the past, we've insured, sort of like a bit more Christmas lights in the past, in the past, are we, is that still going to be covered under this new policy?
Well, yeah, that would be under our public liability scheme. So that's, that's still, that's high level of insurance.
And the, the other question I've got is, okay, they, they're sort of offering training, which is basically the difference of a two hundred pounds. Have our current insurers, Zuri, been asked, uh, to see whether they actually provide the training within their price?
So Zorik at the moment will provide a quotation for what you need, but won't engage in any other discussions. So they are a non-advisory organisation. So you can ask them whether, whether, you know, what their view is on the War Memorial, for example, going back to that, and they will decline to offer you a view on that. And there aren't any additional kind of bolt-ons with that. So the, the insurance you get is, is, has never been an issue. It's good, it's good, you know, cover for us. But they don't advise in the same ways potentially these other, you know, the other organisation will. And they don't, like I said, they don't have those additional extras.
So really, when, when it comes down to it, what we're looking at is that the main difference, uh, is actually this training. Is anything else. The fact that we've been with Zuri for donkey's years and we've never had a problem with them. That's the bit that worries me is actually moving on to something where we've, we've actually been with someone who we've been satisfied with for a long time, back to something that we knew. That concerns me slightly. That, that's where I'm sort of coming from anyway.
It'd be helpful. Would it be helpful if I sort out the views of some other town and parish councils that use Gallaghers? So I think Crewe, for example, used. Would it be helpful if I sought out the views of some other town and parish councils that use Gallaghers? So I think Crewe, for example, used. Had some discussions with the others perhaps, if that would satisfy, you know, that would make you more comfortable.
When, when are we actually going to make this decision by?
Uh, well, you, you, you'll have to make a decision subject to something tonight, because you've got to have made the decision by the twenty-eighth of February.
Okay, I've got three speakers. Deputy Mayor first, councillor Rogers, then councillor Jackson, and then we'll look at, bring me up a proposal, which I think will be subject to a condition. And then we'll move forward, so.
And my concern is, well, let's reiterate the point made about changes to risk or changes to cover that we're likely to require in three years. And I, I just feel it's a little bit almost naive just to give a fixed figure, fixed conditions to an organisation like this. And that concerns me a little bit. If we do find, as surely will be the case, that we'll be in need to change cover in some regards. Uh, will we find that the price is altered then and we're committed to three years? Will we actually be over a barrel to some extent? I know it sounds a bit negative and, you know, a little bit, um, perhaps over cautious. I'd like to express that view.
Okay, councillor Rogers.
Yeah, just very quickly, maybe just worth speaking to our current supplier and saying, we're thinking of leaving it, but can you do anything better? Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. We make the final decision. Thank you.
Councillor Jackson.
Yeah, my, my spin on insurance companies, um, is how good they are when you make a claim. When you're just paying them out, they're just there and you've got a certificate and you feel comfort and you're surrounded. So Sarah, how many claims while you've been chief officer? Have we had a claim from Zurich at all? Have we then? One, and that went through very smoothly, no issue, and was it for a small amount of money, large amount of money?
Uh.
In comparison to the premiums, obviously.
I would say the payout for that was greater than the premium.
Okay, and that was no issue with, with Zurich whatsoever. So on the face of it, Zurich seemed to be a decent company that we've been happy with for many, many years. But I do think we should explore because I think like anything, isn't he, when something comes up for renewal, I mean, the, the television your loyalties to your cat or your dog or your children, not your, not your, not your IT supplier and all that. I think it's, it is useful. Perhaps have a conversation. Um, and I'm just trying to think, timing is, because you've got to make a decision on this to keep us covered uh, before the end of this month. Now, we won't be meeting again until next month, so needs something, Sarah needs something from us to say which way we need, we, we want to go. Uh, I'm, I'm pretty easy with both of them. However, I do think the, the training from Gallagher's is something that's really, really worthwhile. And if it's only for the twelve months, we'd not go for the, for the three years. Could I propose, just because of the training aspect of it, that we allow Sarah to have a talk with, um, Zurich to see if there's anything that can be done on that, or, yeah, I'm sorry.
I think so, the, that gives Sarah the discretion to make the decision minded towards Gallagher.
Well, I, I think we, we, yeah, Sarah can whip an email, email around and say, I've got this brilliant deal with Zurich now. And I could propose to go with Zurich or say, no, Zurich, I don't, don't want to play ball. So I do think the training thing is really worth a lot of money. Uh, potentially with the number, the number of staff that we've got, the number of issues that are there. And I was going to suggest, Sarah, if we do go, um, with Gallagher, that we give a record of the training that staff have been done. So you can come back and we can say, well, this, this is how much this might have cost us if we'd have had to go out to, uh, out, out, out to tender on something on, on the training side. Thank you, Chair.
That was very clear. Do we have a second there?
Well, you've got a proposal and a second already.
Well, yeah, so proposer was councillor Jackson, obviously the discussion went. Councillor Brady was a pro, seconded.
Seconded, yeah.
Councillor Jackson, obviously the discussion went off a bit, but we're back around to where we were.
So Brady happy with your?
Are you happy?
To amend my motion to.
Right, okay. Yes. So you will circulate the decision based on a little bit of additional research in a, in a timely manner.
I will, yeah.
Yes, okay. Can we have a show of hands for that one then, please? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, item eighty, item requested by councillor Proudlove. Tomorrow, the eightieth anniversary of V E Day, uh, Staffordshire Morning District Council is developing a veterans project which will include an event which the council would like to see hosted in Biddles. I, over to you, councillor Proudlove, I won't read the rest of it down.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be staying quickly. Uh, uh, the portfolio holder for communities of Staffordshire Morning District Council, um, he has developed a project to, uh, mark the eighteenth anniversary of V E Day this year. Uh, it's intended to be a project, um, for veterans. And it's a North Staffordshire wide thing and, um, council would like to host it here in Biddles. Um, and as such, I'd, I'd like to get town council's support and, um, working with councillor Corley and the team at Sand DC to shape the programme. Uh, secure an appropriate venue. It may also be worth having at the same time, the district council will make it available to town and parish councils across the Mormons. Um, with, um, to, to help support events to, to, to mark, uh, V E Day this year. So I'd like to propose that, um, we, yeah, we go back to councillor Hawley, uh, Corley, sorry. Too many Haulies and Thaulies. Um, and, um, yeah, uh, for approval, through that process.
Any comments, officer?
Uh, I think, just, just to say, I thought, you know, we were gonna, we were thinking along doing something ourselves on, on V E Day as well. Um, and I don't think, you know, I don't think the intention is to usurp anything that we were wanting to do rather to add to it. And actually put through a little bit of cash this way to make it happen as well. Uh, I, you know, this anniversary will, you know, probably be the ninetieth anniversary, there probably will not be anybody left. I'm thinking it'd be very, very old people at that point in time. But this anniversary is probably maybe the last big one where, um, there are, there are veterans still alive. I think it's really, I think it's really important that, that it is marked in the town. And obviously we've got the Royal British Legion who we've got really good, uh, working relationship with as well. So perhaps they can be brought into whatever, whatever the plan is. Thank you.
I think I'd just like to reiterate that. I think, yeah, I'm pretty sure, well, I know that Biddletown Council as herself, you know, led by the officers, would definitely be doing an event for V E Day. Uh, I think looking at it as a broader picture, it is actually good to, to not be leak-centric when it comes to these major events. So it is good to actually spread it around. So in, in that respect, I do respect the fact that, uh, you know, councillor, uh, Corley has decide, has, has recognised that fact and decided not to just park it, park everything in the can actually come around. Uh, so, but I'm, so I'm sure we could engage in some kind of conversation to see what Biddletown Council could do with itself, what the leak thing is, whether it's a major event or whether it's effectively based on a church service, very much like the Holocaust memorial event was, one doesn't know quite what's, what is in his mind at this moment in time. Because certainly the Holocaust memorial event, which was centred around St Edward's Church, uh, was received very well. It was very much a district thing. And if it's a case of doing something like that in, in Biddles and then we've got uh, town and needing to do everything else, then that might work well. I certainly would think it's something worth, uh, ex- exploring, can't. Well, no more than, no more than that. Councillor Paul.
Thank you, thank you very much, Chair. Um, just on, on that point, obviously this V E Day, if things go as they are supposedly going, will also be the week that I will be becoming chairman of Staffordshire Mormons District Council. And I think it's very apt that you're having the conversation that you're having now, because one thing that is not going to be in my year is chairmanship is leak-centric. And I will unashamedly probably be quite Biddle centric. So, uh, as we think ahead to those Mormons things, be aware that it would be certainly my intention that this will be the centre of my chairmanship, will be my town.
Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts on that?
Certainly.
And we, uh, have a proposal from you then councillor Proudlove, along the lines of exploring.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I propose that, um, that we make contact with, um, councillor Corley, not Corley, um, and, um, you know, progress discussions with, with him and the team over there with regards to what this, this could look like.
Can I have a second for that, please? Councillor Brady, seconded. Could I have a show of hands to accept as a recommendation? Gentlemen, are we, yes, I take that as unanimous. Thank you. Councillor Proudlove, could you make the appropriate introductions?
I will do.
Okay, item number twenty-one, the precept discussion is to confirm the recommendations from the Finance Strategy and Management Committee meeting. Uh, the section A committee budgets for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six and the spreadsheet attached. There's also section B, the fees and charges for twenty-five, twenty-six, which is attached. And item C, the precept requirement for twenty-five, twenty-six. Four hundred and eighty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty pounds, based on a tax base of six thousand one hundred and four properties. On four hundred and one property. Uh, again, documents attached. Would you like to say something on this, uh, if officer?
Um, I, I don't think so, no. We've talked about this initially. It's a recommendation from the Finance Strategy and Management Committee. You can move them on block or you can move them individually. I don't know whether anybody's got any additional points to make, but obviously we've been given the opportunity to have a look at all the all the information going forward. Councillor Rogers.
Okay, councillor Rogers.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, finance, I'd like to thank all the councillors involved in finance, all councillors really. And particularly the staff, because to produce these figures, the facts and figures, isn't easy. To get it down to what I think is a small increase really for what we get, which represents it on this sheet that's been produced this evening. Look at the circle, the pie chart. Biddletown Council is by far the smallest, in many ways, by far the most active. Um, there's people on there you never see a face of, who've got bigger portions than us. But I think there is an increase, not a massive one, but it's very important for this town that we, we do do a little increase. A bit more than we have in the past, but as you know, everything is going up in cost. Um, can't read discuss figures at the moment because it hasn't been passed. But if you look on your last page, it does tell you how much it's going to be increased by, if it's passed, by about in a few minutes. And then we can speak about it more even openly, I suppose, after that. And the percentage, the percentage looks quite high. The actual figures are very low. So thank you for everybody. Thanks, and members of the staff.
Don't seem.
All that, please.
Councillor Jackson.
Yeah, I seconded everything that Wayne said, but also like to place on record. Wayne's chaired this meeting. He's not been chairman of finance for a great length of time. And it's a difficult committee to chair. Uh, can I just put on record, certainly my thanks to the work and effort that he's put in alongside the staff as well.
Very much, thank you.
So everyone had sight of the draft press release. It's the one with the little blubs and I see, I see there's a stash next to it.
I was saying.
Well, worth looking at, there's, I've done that shit.
That's the thing we usually produce every year. Oh my gosh.
Careful, 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 careful. For this one.
It's not, from my perspective, there isn't a lot to say about this because that's the conversation we've just had, but we've tried something a little bit different this year in terms of the press release, which I think will be interesting for you and your discussions going forward beyond today. So the second side of that document basically breaks down where the funds will go to. Um, in terms of, basically so that people can see where their money goes. It's based on the, the, um, predicted expenditure for twenty-five, twenty-six. And the little green blobs, um, are varying in sizes depending on the proportion of that. Um, and hopefully will give people an idea what their funding is spent on within the town.
Okay.
It's not necessarily for approval, that document, but I wanted you, as I say, to have sight of that before we start to send it out on the website.
So just, just making this clear, the, uh, we're going to take items A, B and C, the committee budgets, the fees and charges and the precept requirement on block. They have been proposed by councillor Rogers. Councillor Jackson, you have something to say before we go to the?
I've, I've obviously seen this tonight, to be fair. Um, but there's, there's no mention of the, uh, town council's local initiative fund here. I'm sure we're slipping something in there about that. One, it is an expenditure that we do, but also it would let people know out there that there is this pot as well. It would help to advertise that as well. I'm, I'm not passionate about it, but if.
No, we can do, it's, it, that figure is rolled within the community grants section, you see, but we could make it more explicit, as it were, that there, there is an element of that, there is councillor.
Yeah, yeah.
Recommendation.
I think that's.
Cheers.
Councillor Hawley.
Thank you, Chair. I, I was just sort of wondering, what we've got in here is fine, but the one thing I'm just sort of wondering, is it worth making the point that in the past that we've actually subsidised the grant, the reserve or, well, we've taken money out of reserves to subsidise or spend. But basically, we've got to charge more now because it is just not sustainable. And whether or not that point ought to be made actually in there, um, it's just a, it's a thought that whether that is something there, that we, we can't carry on doing that adding for an item.
If, um.
You, you, you've made, you've made the point, we've used some savings to fund projects.
I was going to say, we've made it more subtly than that. We can make that more explicit if you want to as well. So I've said that bottom paragraph is since the Covid pandemic and the start of the cost of living crisis.
Gentlemen.
The town council has attempted to keep any increases low. We've used some savings to fund projects, but we can embellish that a bit more if you, if you feel as.
Yeah, I just sort of wondered whether or not we should actually make the point that they, to actually carry on doing that is unsustainable. You know, which obviously in the long, in the medium term is an unsustainable position.
Yes, so how, we risk not being able to support people in our communities if we cannot find ways to pay these increased bills. So um, the current position's unsustainable.
Yeah. Absolutely no doubt about it during the Covid and the initial cost of living crisis, reserves were used, which isn't something you can do in for an item. Uh, councillor Lawton, say something.
Thank you. Like other people, the first time I've seen this tonight. I'm particularly pleased that by the use of graphics of different sizes on that side of the page. And on the reverse side, while colours are used, the, the, the description of the expenditure is pointed to that colour, is of great assistance to people who might have colour vision problems. I think the two things together make this a very attractive document for those who are not particularly numerate with numbers and might have difficulty with the colours. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so in a position where we're taking the councillor ward and then this will be the last intervention for the vote.
And I'm not sure if it is a typo, Chair, but on the one where it's got, where we hold events that celebrate V E Day, we've got V Y D A Day, I presume that's Vixi in Japan. Is that a typo? Just thinking before it goes out, that's all.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's it. A little tiger. Your finger had a wobble.
If it's going out, let's go.
Yeah, let's have it that. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a proposer. I'm still looking for a second there.
Please.
Councillor Paul. Uh, can we go to the vote, please? All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much.
This is just the call that we need to submit to the district council.
Are you going to get my deputy to sign it?
Yes, it does need.
Okay, moving. Okay, moving on. Item 82, we are looking at the accounts and finance to approve the accounts paid in February 2025. Expenditure over £500. Again, looking at any exceptions, expenditure less than £500. And the smaller amounts of expenditure on the credit card. There is also a supplementary document, which is item D, which has been circulated. Again, expenditure over £500. Expenditure less than £500. And again, a small amount of expenditure on the credit card. Are there any observations or comments required on those? But I have a proposer to receive that. As the bar, sorry.
I'm just noticing, it's probably a very simple explanation. There is nothing in the how much the business rates are, electricity, the tamble boxes. All the prison solutions.
Yes, please.
All testing you now.
I'm not sure where they.
By the way, can councillor Hawley?
Yeah, I just, I might have missed it somewhere in the past, basically lifestyle windows that we spent £2,575 on. Presume, I must have missed it somewhere, that we agreed that we were going to replace all the windows in the visitor sector.
Oh, it's four windows in the visitor centre, yes. But the agreement happened quite some time ago because we had £2,000 from the county council pay for that. So the vast majority of that cost, we've already had the money for actually. So it needed spending before the end of the actual year. But yeah, the vast of that was covered by, by a grant.
Yeah, it was covered by a grant.
Sure where those figures have gone. Can I circulate them to you? They're usual figures, octopus and their business rates, but I'll just confirm.
There's one, seven, nil.
With the obvious caveat that those three figures are missing and will follow, can we have a proposer? Councillor Park, seconded by councillor Hawley. Can we have a show of hands to accept those accounts on the supplementary accounts? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. There's something on the last page which there isn't. That's 12 minutes past seven. That concludes the meeting. Thank you very much. Like a large agenda today and thank you for your contribution.
It's about recreational amenities and five minutes.